We'll call the regular Board of Education meeting to order and have roll call.
Dyson.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee.
Here.
Maycomber.
Here.
Wintering. Absinthe.
Next, we'll have the reading of the mission statement by Director Frisbee. Our mission is to engage, inspire, empower students and staff in order to maximize learning. And the reading of the vision statement by Director Maycomber.
And did you know my fellow board members, that everything we do, we aim to maximize learning for students and staff, to personalize learning experiences, student-centered environments, and real-world opportunities. Individuals are challenged to positively impact the global community.
Thank you. Agenda item four is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections, Dr. Cox?
No corrections.
Motion?
Motion approved, agenda.
I'll second.
They've moved in second to approve the agenda as published. Roll call vote, please.
Walker.
Yes.
Frisbee.
Yes.
Maycomber.
Yes.
Dyson.
Yes. Motion carried forward to zero. Agenda item five is to welcome the visitors and have public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I will explain our process for public comment. The Board will have comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As Board President, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the Board to complete the full Board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the Board's authority. Please understand that we, as a Board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa Sunshine Law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's Board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. We thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item six, comments by Board members and superintendent. We'll begin with Dr. Cox.
Thank you. So, the rain and flooding last week led to the washed-out roads and impassable roads on Thursday, and cancellation of school Thursday and Friday. Students and staff were commended for their efforts with sandbagging. They were a big blessing to our community. Also, the people of the Independence Community School District brought cleaning supplies and bottled water to their football game on Friday night versus Charles City to send back home with us, and we are very grateful for their generosity. Now, the school-approved calendar that we did last spring had said that the first three snow days wouldn't be made up. Obviously, we just anticipated missing the school for snow, not for anything else. I have spoken with the association president, and she has agreed we will not make up those two days. Teachers will make up the contract days on June 1st and 2nd of 2017. It is homecoming week, and the details are posted on our website, charlescityschools.org. Upper left-hand corner, you'll find those details. And lastly, the German students will be arriving here. We have an annual exchange program with students from Walschroda, Germany. They're arriving about 8:00 PM tomorrow, and they will be our guests through October 21st.
Very good. Any other comments from Board members?
Just a great shout-out to all our students and staff that helped. Lots of good reports on students helping, even my husband had commented that they went down to pick up some sandbags, brought the show along, and the whole football team plus was down there. They never filled a single bag, so thank you to all the staff and students for doing a great job.
Anything else from Board members? I'll echo that. All of the activities from last week with the flooding in town and with no school, it was nice to see on all of the social media outlets that we follow how many students were around town and assisting. I even did one tweet showing a pickup, and then I was ready to protect my building, and within 10 minutes, I had 12 cross-country members there, all ready to pitch in and help protect my office. So, I think everyone was grateful for everything that the students and the staff did over the last couple of days, and now we'll move on to recovery efforts in the town and the country. If there's no other comments, we'll move on to agenda item seven, the Team Leadership, Teacher Leadership Team. Sorry. We have members here to give us a presentation. Wes, did you make sure you used the microphone so that your voices are picked up for our viewing audience as well? Thank you.
Thank you. We want to thank you for allowing us to come and speak and share what's been going on with our teacher leadership team. We're going to start by introducing ourselves. I'm Sheila Etherington, former first-grade teacher and now instructional coach.
I'm Brittany Molstead, and I was formerly a special education teacher at the middle school, and now I am an instructional coach for the district.
My name is David Vilbest, and I was a former high school math teacher and now an instructional coach.
Marie Conflin, former special ed teacher at Lincoln Elementary, now a success coach.
Anne Meads, I have still teaching half-time special ed as I did last year, and instead of teaching reading at the high school, I now am a success coach for probably middle school, high school.
Kelly Bogus, first grade, Lincoln, Washington, and now I'm an instructional coach.
So, we'll have a PowerPoint so you can kind of follow along with us as we go. I'm going to just talk about how we first got started, and it came to the district as an informational meeting, and all staff was invited to come and just kind of hear about this grant and what was going on. And then, they asked for volunteers. And so, once the volunteers were taken into account, we got started, and we did a survey and surveyed the staff to dig a little deeper and see what were our needs, where did the staff feel like we needed to grow, and how could they best be supported. And we took those surveys and went to some ed camps, researched some other districts. We're in the third year of the grant, so hold on. They had written, and then started digging into writing our own grant. So, we submitted the grant in October of 2015, and then we chaired it out in January of 2016 when it was approved. A lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of homework went into writing the grant. And then, we went into the process of hiring the teachers, model teachers, mentor teachers, success coaches, and model teacher, mentor teacher, and success coaches, instructional coaches. Oh, that would be me. Yeah, that's what we hired. And as part of the process of the hiring of the teachers, there were two interview processes, one with peer peers for 45 minutes, and one with administration for 45 minutes. Also presented a portfolio of information, so that was kind of a process that we went through.
As Sheila said, we did a lot of surveying of the staff, we did a lot of research before, kind of making the final decisions. Two big components that we walked away with was the focus on characteristics of effective instruction, and so using that as a vehicle to connect with teachers and see how we can help improve student learning. And also with that, one of the things you won't see in many of the other districts is the position of the success coach. One of the big takeaways at the ed camp was some of the districts that were already in the grant process really wished they would have separated behavior from academics. And so, our success coaches work primarily with classroom management, behavior-type resources in our district, whereas instructional coaches work more with the academic side of things. Not that we don't occasionally cross paths or help with the others, but totally based on what the teacher needs to help improve student learning in their classroom, so we just felt that it was definitely good to try having two separate positions. So, that's why we made that decision to put that in the grant. The next part, I'm gonna, Sheila's gonna pass out. On the side that she's handing you up is the side we're looking at now, we, in the grant, one of the sections was the goals for the teacher leader program, and within the goals, we had to use the state goals. So, you'll notice there on the top, there are three goals, those are written in the grant, and next to each of the goals explains which state goal it addresses. So, there are five total state goals. We were able to kind of condense them down into three goals that we felt were doable. The next section is our strategic plan. At our second or third, it was our second training with the AEA, one of the things they had us develop was the strategic plan. So, how are we going to put this into action? What are we going to focus on? And so, you'll notice that our vision is the Charles City vision. No, I was wrong. The mission.
Vision.
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 Yes, the vision is the Charles City vision. The mission, how we're going to get to that vision, is going to look different, obviously, than the district's mission. So, one of the big takeaways this summer was that growth mindset, that what can we do to continually grow and learn just right along with our students to help with that student success? And then, it goes on to break it down to what are our beliefs, and then what are our practices that support those beliefs? And so, this is the plan that we came up with as a team through several meetings to kind of condense it down into to one plan.
I'm here to talk about implementation, and many of the things that Marie talked about were part of our implementation. Shortly after we got hired, we got started. Many districts started their teacher leadership work in the next contract year, but not so at Charles City. We actually started meeting in March. Our first meeting was March 23rd, and one of two that we had in March. We determined the course for PD, for the PD, for the TLC team, for the spring and the summer. In April, we attended our first training, which was provided by the AEA in Des Moines. It was for all districts that were in the third year, the ones that applied for the grant in the third-year part. We met four other days in April. During that time, many of the things Marie talked to you about is being very intentional about what steps we needed to have a successful start. We gathered information from other districts, as was mentioned. Some coaches traveled to Benton just to visit with coaches. Some of us went to PBIS training. Some coaches attended Benton ed camps that were focused on TLC work, but we went out and garnered as much information as we could from other districts. From other districts, we learned about reluctance to use coaches at the beginning of the time. So, we decided that at the end of the year, we would each go out and talk to teachers, and talk to them about what things they thought were exciting about teacher leadership, and what things they feared, and had great one-on-one conversations. We had, also in May, we started a book study on Building Teacher Capacity for Success by Hall &amp; Simmerall. It talks about how to use reflection as part of coaching, and reflection is a big part about being a good teacher, reflecting of the work you do, how can you change it to make it better. In June, we attended our second team training on student-centered coaching, and it's based on the work of Diane Sweeney, which is our chosen framework for coaching. It is a focus on student outcomes and not on fixing the teacher. It's work making sure we're looking at outcomes, how can we make outcomes better? And we had one other meeting where we continued our book study. In July, we had our third team training, Leveraging Teacher Leadership, which included seminars by Hall &amp; Simmerall, authors of the book of our book study. We included team-building activities also, an escape room in Des Moines. We had one other meeting in July. In August, we had worked a long time on the Model Teacher Day. We had a training of 12 of the 14 selected model teachers where we worked on team-building, and what does a model teacher do? What are the expectations of what they're going to do? And then, in those first few days when we had PD before school started, we had a short, our kickoff, which was a short presentation about what we're going to do. And as part of that, we included a humorous skit. We took all of those fears that had come out in those one-on-one conversations, and we pimped ourselves, kind of. Maybe I shouldn't put that on. But we, like, talked about, they would know I work lots of hours, and so we would say, talk about, hey, you know, she stays all night, maybe they're going to expect me to work all night. So, we all talked about what we thought teachers would fear about us, and we put that in the skit and gave it a very nice kickoff. Teachers appreciated getting some of those misconceptions taken care of. We are currently working on making sure that we visit and build relationships with all teachers district.
Okay, so one thing that was really important to us is how we were going to share what types of things that we could do as teacher leaders, and so one of the ways we decided to communicate that is through our collaboration cafe menu. And so, it's kind of just a little whimsical piece that we put together, but it shares all of the different things that we can work with teachers on. So, you'll see that on the backside of your strategic plan if you haven't found that already, but we organize it into appetizers, entrees, and desserts. And the appetizers are maybe a little less invasive type of things that we can work on with teachers. It might be observing in their classroom, it might be classroom coverage so that they can go see a model teacher. The entrees are more of the meat of the work, so how can we work on a lesson in co-teaching with a teacher? And then, the dessert is really looking at more of that reflection piece. We also want to eventually get to that, the buffet, which is our coaching cycles. And coaching cycles are typically four to six weeks. It kind of depends on what grade level you're working on, but you pick one of the characteristics of effective instruction that the teacher wants to work on, and then you use that student-centered coaching practice to implement the buffet or the coaching cycle, to come up with some really awesome goals at the end. And then, we have some endless refills of the beverages, and that's the types of things like building relationships and reflection, and those pieces that you don't want to ever be done with. So, that's our menu, and that's also available, like, on our website, so our teachers can always see what we can do and then get ahold of us and let us know. And we really wanted this to be a personalized effort, so teachers can kind of pick and choose. Some teachers are going to be ready for maybe just appetizers at this point, it's brand-new, and hopefully, teachers will eventually get to where they're ready for a cycle, the buffet. That's our goal, but right now, it's for teachers to choose what they're ready for, and this is how we present it to them.
We also, on the Charles City website, have a page. If you go across to the Staff tab, and then down, you'll find Teacher Leadership Team, and that's where we have several different links for you to, and staff, to find some information about us. If you look on the Coaches tab, you'll find a little bio about all of the instructional coaches and the success coaches. And then, going across to the Model Teachers, there's some question and answers about what model teachers would do. If you go across to the Teacher Resource tab, there are roles and responsibilities that are listed, and that is roles of the instructional coaches, principals, success coach, model teacher, and mentor teacher. There's a lot of roles and responsibilities, many defined right there, a good place for you to find out what people do and what they don't do. There's also a Coach and Principal Agreement, a more lengthy document, really just spilling out what the coach's responsibilities are. There's also, the menu is on there as well, so you can find that. And at the very bottom, there's Teacher Surveys, and so when we survey teachers, that's where that information will be, you can see how those surveys turn out. Besides the frequently asked questions, there's also a Contact tab, and that Contact tab will find each of the coach's names, and you'll find their weekly schedules there also. We want to be very transparent with the staff. They can look at that tab, find that coach, and see what their week looks like every single week, and also their emails, if you want to get ahold of them.
As part of our kickoff, we initially surveyed the teaching staff, and 72% of our teachers said that they were already open to meeting with us on a regular basis. So, in the last month, we've already gotten out and done quite a few pop-ins, and have already started to collaborate. The testimonials behind here are some of their thoughts about what we are accomplishing thus far. So, one is saying, "It has been a great experience to work with teacher leaders as my other peers." A second teacher said, "I'm not sure what I would have done at the start of the year without the TLT team. It has made my transition to a new grade level much smoother. I am super grateful for these wonderful people." A third teacher stated, "She has served as a great bridge between our department and the administrative team, and I have leaned on her multiple times to improve my skills in the classroom." A fourth teacher states, "But this makes me more excited for what we have in store for helping our kids." And lastly, "You've helped me so much already this year. I also really appreciate the encouraging note you left in my room after your visit. It was so nice hearing some comments about what you saw." So, again, these are reflective of teachers' comments back to us as a team, and saying the collaboration efforts that we've already started, and we hope to continue and encourage more of in the future.
Josh Johnson, high school principal. So, we just wanted to take a little bit of time, if you had any questions to ask right now. Probably should have got in here a little bit earlier just to let you know the administration and how we're kind of helping work with this team. As throughout the work of the grant, and then in the summer, I've kind of taken on the joy of working with these people as kind of the administrative lead. Marsha DeBoer is also taking on some of those responsibilities, and we're trying to kind of split some of those things between elementary and secondary. But for the most part, I've been able to work with the team in developing plans and a lot of the documentation that you saw today. But we really wanted to just take some time, if you had any questions for me or for the team, just a few minutes if we have any to spare.
You mentioned that 70% of the teachers participate. Is it something teachers can opt out of then, or do you just initially work with that 70% and then persuade the other 30%?
I think a lot of it has come down to relationships. At that, I'm very excited to ask, we're going to ask that question every month. Are you ready for coaches to enter? And I think a lot of teachers that we thought wouldn't want us to step foot in their room have changed their mind, or have kind of entered into a sort of coaching without even realizing that that's part of what coaching is. So, it's been, it's been very weird. We were overjoyed the first, we were all, like, stressed, but it was a good stress because we thought we were going to be, just based on other things we'd heard, that it was not going to be the most positive experience to start the year because of the nature of the positions, but the staff has just been very, very welcoming. So, it's totally, right now, kind of in the teacher's court, is what we, what we were very much also encouraged to do this summer when we started the process.
This, so far this year, we've been in every classroom in the district. We've been able to pop in to every single classroom in the district and sit down and observe the great things that are going on. So, yeah, we were completely blown away, completely blown away by the kind reception, I guess is what you call it, yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, I think we all kind of have the mindset that it's not about when it's going to happen, it's about how it's going to happen, you know? So, how will we impact your classroom? How will we get to work with these teachers? It's not whether it's going to be this year or next year, but how can we be a part of all of this?
From the administrative side of it, we're not being super aggressive with, this is going to happen, get ready, work with these people. We've kind of just sat back and let the process take fold, and it is a matter of, it's not if, it's when you're going to work with these people in some capacity, but as they've already said, it's really pretty amazing how much good reception that we've had thus far. I mean, we really couldn't ask for a better start in terms of people wanting what we're asking.
We're given a lot of flexibility from the state to be able to implement this, how we had written the grant, is that true, or are we bound by strings attached to some different things? What are kinds of outcomes or reporting that we have to do to that? Is it what that process, you know, all that of implementing this, and how's that gone?
Compared to some other things that come down from the state level, and not to, you know, put specific examples out there, but there's a lot of time here with what our plan was, even from the grant-writing process.
Yeah.
Now, our practice has started to stray a little bit from what our grant was written to do, but it's a very flexible process to reallocate funds or change the writing of the grant through a pretty easy portal with the state to make those changes. In terms of how we operate on a day-to-day basis and reporting out, there are some requirements that we need to show the impact on things, and those won't take shape until after Christmas when we get, have some real data to show, but there is a reporting aspect to it that we'll be aware of. Any changes that we want to make year to year, we do have to communicate, and they have to be approved through the state, but it's such a simple process that, you know, we feel like there's a pretty good relationship. They've put a lot of money into this program, so they want to see it succeed, and they know that each district's going to tackle it their own way.
It'd be interesting sometime to share some of those goals and measurements that you're.
Absolutely. Well, those are more established, we'll definitely do that, yeah.
Thank you. I think it'd also be interesting to talk to some of those teachers that were the 30% at some point, too, maybe after Christmas.
Yeah, and I don't know how much they really elaborate on how much input they're really going to get every 30 days, maybe.
Every month.
They kind of mention that, and so when we get 90 to 120, they'll be back here to share that data and show you kind of how that's grown. I think if we redid it right now, it would even be higher. I mean, that's just how much of a start we're up to, so.
Plus, sorry, plus that 30% is really only reflecting the people who didn't, who weren't ready quite yet to start reading on a regular basis. So, that doesn't mean that we could walk into their classroom or observe them and their students, it just meant that they didn't want to have, like, meet weekly meetings with us.
I like that, with, just for my little bit of involvement, which was miniscule, of course, the opportunity you've had to look over all the grades and see what's going and have that knowledge, it's not just the principal or just the administrative staff, it's a teacher that's able to look, play along, but that is outstanding.
Absolutely.
And that's one of the things, too, we've, I don't like, I'm a drama person, but I'll, um, that's one of the things that we've found that's really been kind of amazing is even not being restricted to one building, especially our instructional coaches. You know, I'm, the success coach is a little more definition, I'm pretty much K-4, and Anne's pretty much 5'12", but the instructional coaches, we are, they're very fluid and have been in other buildings and are already working with teachers in other buildings, and just that reception and that crossover's been really awesome to see.
Can you talk and talk some more center meetings? Just saying. I think what's been very fun for me to watch is our new teachers observing our model teachers, and just that hunger and the willingness and that open growth mindset that they have, and that that's a vehicle. So, we, you know, I don't know what to do about this. It's not about us having all the answers, but our district has the answers, and we have so many teachers that are willing to speak into each other's lives and their strategies, and I think that says a lot of great things about this district, so.
Yeah, the timing and the correlation to all the new staff we have is, couldn't be better.
And facility.
Yeah.
I'll just end with my own testimony. I'll just end with my own testimony because you're right on. I mean, the amount of different things happening in our district right now. You could argue throwing another thing into the mix could have been detrimental, but the time that, literally, weeks after these people were hired, we dug in and met regularly. I mean, we were meeting 60 to 70 hours towards the end of the school year total in the last couple of months just to make sure that we got off on the right foot. And the amount of time and effort put in, everybody's attention to detail to get it off on the right foot has been awesome. I mean, I don't know how this school year would have been for me personally, but as an admin team, if we didn't have them out in the trenches for us right now. So, can't say enough about them. I think we're lucky we're gonna be the epitome of what this program, grant, whatever it's called now around the state, develop partnerships with people. I mean, I could go on for another 10 minutes about how awesome it's been to see this group work. So, some be very proud about, so, thanks for giving us some time, Emily.
Thank you so much.
We thank you for your dedication and your time last spring and even now, working towards this leadership team. We look forward to great results and more team building amongst all of our staff. Thank you very much for your... If there's nothing else, we'll move on to agenda item eight, real estate update, from Dr. Cox.
Yeah, so, I've got a very brief update to share with you about progress with the athletic complex. Dean has shared with me that he's been working on this and one of the properties that he has identified is much larger than the 10 to 12 acres that the board had requested. So, he's working with that potential seller on either purchasing just the 10 to 12 or, you know, is it gonna be the larger number and then we have to have a use for that. Another property is closer to that 10 to 12 acre size. And then, he's got two other potential locations that he has identified and he's working as well to kind of nail down what the price per acre would be on those and how many acres would be available. So, we're not at a point yet where it's time to have a closed session to talk about a specific piece of land that I would recommend that you consider for an athletic complex, but we are making progress toward that.
See the picture in the press today? What was it titled? Sportsman's Park Bay or something like that? Of the floodwaters, of the fields completely, once again, completely.
Completely, yeah.
Completely built, yes, so.
Just another...
Just another...
He didn't have any, I assume, idea on timeline with the, with the, I know it's a delicate process with the terms that we've put out there, so, what do you think?
I would say another couple weeks.
Couple weeks?
Yeah.
Good. I think we have another task force meeting in early October, so, if you have anything to share this update at that time or report progress or if there's anything to develop supporting, share that as well.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, middle school addition change order. We should be getting close to finished with these change orders, are we not?
Should be.
Okay.
We have some work on schedule.
Yeah. Any questions on the change orders for administration or based upon our tactics? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve middle school addition change orders 82, 83, 96, 97, and 103, totaling $9,190.11 as presented.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the middle school addition change orders 82, 83, 96, 97, and 103, totaling $9,190.11 as presented. Any other discussion or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Eric Dunn will have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 10, the 2015-16 LEV allowable growth cost. Do we have any information from administration they'd like to give?
We, we can apply for this supplemental state amount each year. This is the amount of cost of the program over the current funding that we receive from the state in categorical funds. So, we can request allowable growth for this later when we do our budget as well.
And this is the limited English proficient...
Right.
...cost to the district.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion?
I'd like a motion to request supplemental state aid in the amount of $60,551.86 for the fiscal year 2016 excess LEV costs.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to request supplemental state aid for the fiscal year 2016 excess LEV costs. Any other discussion or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Eric Dunn will have roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 11, consideration of consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items listed below.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 12, correspondence and miscellaneous.
No correspondence this week.
Okay. Agenda item 13, as important upcoming dates.
A reminder, it's homecoming. Reminder, the German students arrive tomorrow. There's a TQ meeting, Teacher Quality Committee meeting next Monday at 3:45. On October 10th is the next board meeting. It's also parent-teacher conference night, so, parents have not signed up for conferences yet, head to the website, charlescityschools.org, and you can take care of that there.
Okay, having no other business to come before the board, we will adjourn.